Yeah, I don't think she's.
Oh, it's nice to see you.
That's now in the internet and gone viral in perpetuity. But yes, it's good to see you too. But I did see you two weeks ago. You didn't call me, Bob.
I didn't.
Thank you. Peter says seven o'clock. Okay, the meeting's called Order, please rise for the plench. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of. Thank you, I'd like to observe a moment of silence in the beginning for two former people associated. Dan Shakalinski, attended schools in North Syracuse Central. Hubert, a retiree of the North Syracuse. We're gonna start right off with a presentation from Dr. Leahy on the, uh, something to do with ESSA. There's, we have some acronyms for these, the, uh, SEP and the, what do you call the other?
SEP.
SEP, okay, gotta learn my new acronyms.
So, um, last meeting, we had some conversation around the district's initiative on working with the state to strengthen our systems in our schools. I have two things I'm gonna go through fairly quickly tonight. First one is the SEP, the School Comprehensive Education Plan, um, and that plan is being built around Roxboro Road Elementary School to strengthen some of their systems. Because Roxboro Road is part of a larger district system, the North Syracuse District, we're also required to create a district comprehensive improvement. We think is probably a great thing for the district because it helps us identify some of the issues that aren't just Roxboro Road elementary issues, but actually district things that we work on together, um, to kind of move forward, um, and to get in front of it. So I'm gonna just walk you through, um, and give you a little bit of context. I know there was some questions last, um, last board meeting. So first, this comes with federal Every Student Succeeds Act, um, and what happens is New York State works with the federal government, submits a plan how they're gonna meet the criteria. In New York State, we have five basic criteria for measuring school quality. The first one is student. How are students performing particularly in math in the LA? Second one is growth in school progress. Not only are students hitting a high mark, but are they working through, um, everything they need to in terms of making progress year after year? So if we have a second grader that's maybe at a point where they're earning a two or three, are they moving forward as they go through? Look for student growth over time. Um, and then we have the progress of English language learners, how are those students faring? We have a, a, a population of students who are ELL students, um, and our population's increasing throughout time. The next, um, indicator is chronic absenteeism. Ten percent is the threshold or eighteen days. Once schools get beyond that, then that's, that's a concern. Last one is graduation rates and prepping students for. Versus you take in high school, are you gonna walk across the stage, earn a diploma that's gonna prepare you to either enter the workforce or to enter a college and be. That's what we're working with in terms of New York State and, and that's our state to meet the ESSA requirements. So there's two challenges with Roxboro Elementary School, the two challenges, working through the primary challenges, the first one is chronic absentee. Rate that was higher than that threshold, we've already brought down four percentage points since the year that we were, um, that we. Out, um, in terms of the. Other challenge is the math scores were lower in some of the grade. But working constructively with the state, the state has a framework in seeing that these are high level. Which schools and districts can work together to improve student performance. First one is tenant one, systems and organizations. For example, if we look at our tenant systems, um, can we strengthen those systems? Are there best practices, um, whether it be just simply sets notifying parents, meeting with parents, finding ways to support students who are having a hard time getting in? Breakfast programs, things like that. How do we make sure our kids are getting on the bus in the morning, getting? Um, and we're doing play, we're having some great conversations around what are some of the best practices within our district? In other districts, how do we improve those systems? The next one. One of the challenges, um, that we, we all face as school leaders is the time, you know, how much time do we have in the classroom? Principals make those, those daily visits to the classroom, can they be? Uh, with all the things on their plate and all the things that. How do, how do we strengthen our school leaders and how do we? How do we strengthen our curriculum and our instruction through PLCs, through making sure that we have a, a, a very strong curriculum that every student understands? All working hard together. Um, and the next one is social emotional learning, it's really interesting that, that, that this is. Our kids have to come to. Sharing a lot of issues to them, do we have a staff, do we have the right approach? We have connections with the community, are we using the resources we have? Last one is family and community. Are the families supporting our school, are they getting into school? Um, are we engaging families with their needs and what they might need? Tenants that we work with, um, in. Model is really a constructive model where the state says, hey, we want you. To figure out the areas of priority and we're gonna work with you over the next couple of years to make. And that we're doing the things. So we have two sets of goals for the School Comprehensive Education Plan. Left-hand side, you have supporting teachers and implement, and implementing learning targets in classroom and. Making sure that we're clear about what we're trying to accomplish. All on point. The second one is refine and fully support professional learning communities. Um, our teachers are working together in professional learning communities. We still have work to do, do we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum? Are we? Writing formative assessments for our students. The third one is create committee, uh, uh, and protocol for monitoring and intervening to minimize. Every school is gonna be creating a committee to. Monitor rates and make sure that we're engaging, um, those families to make sure that those. Last one is strengthening communication between. Parents are aware of all the wonderful things that are happening in our school. Afterwards, school events, school functions, assemblies, but also make sure that they can come to us. Here to support the child. That's for our school education plan. Now, the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan is a little bit broader. It's looking at the first item is streamlining assessments and prioritizing. What's the best data? That we can use here and now to support students here and now. Uh, we get state. Help inform our instruction. Second one, increase administrative presence in classrooms. Very, very busy, but can we get administrators to do additional walkthroughs so that they're visible in the classrooms? They're there to support them, so the teachers feel supported. That's important. Um, the third thing is the vertical alignment of the ELA math curriculum, not just that there's a guaranteed and viable curriculum, but does it make sense sequentially as students work their way up through the grade levels? Does a second grade teacher know what the first grade teacher was trying to accomplish and is a third grade? Vertical, vertically aligned, and we have a lot of that going on, but we need to strengthen it. Um, strengthening classroom management and behavioral intervention. That's, that's gonna be an ongoing challenge and that's something that's really. Are our teachers, and we have a lot of new teachers year after year, are they given the skills, um, and the tech? As a building, do we have go-to people? Do we have a system? Air teams in place, so if a child has a crisis, we can bring those people together, mobilize them, support that child and make sure that we are there to help them and their family. Last one is develop school-based systems, again, to monitor chronic absenteeism. Have some inconsistencies across the district. Well, some are, are finding this is a. Now that we are gonna be measured by absenteeism rates, we have to really take a hard look at this and say, what are the best practices? And at what point do we have to call families in to have a meeting to see how we can? Regular basis, because we know if they're missing school in the elementary levels or the middle. Star, um, they're not going to make it to graduation and that's. Have to have a system to, to target this, to get after it, to make. Families, we can work with them to put a plan in place to get those kids on the bus. Those are our two sets of goals that we're working through right now, um, and this is kind of the overall process and response, and I will be. So back in March, nice to visit Roxboro Road Elementary, they did some walkthroughs, they talked with the administration. Parents, students, um, to get a better understanding of what was happening, staff. Everybody in June, everybody. Rich, rich, um, set of data that tells us a lot about perceptions and understanding of. Those two committees, the DCEP and S. Worked with Corliss Kaiser, who's a former. Consultant, she did some really great work. What's that?
Nothing. Our retirees.
So the plans were approved locally in July thirty-first, committees convened, divided to some. Gonna be dividing to some committees, we're gonna be working on August thirteenth and sixteenth. We are anticipating, there'll be some feedback from the state, the plans have been submitted last week, um, and then we're gonna be working monthly throughout the, throughout the school year to make sure that these goals are the right goals, that we're hitting the mark and if. And then let's just continue through here. We wanna look at everything very closely to make sure our students are. Then we're gonna go back, um, and share with you where we are in February. We, we wanna look at where we are halfway through the year and say, are we making the progress? Do we have measurable, concrete data to demonstrate that our plan is on point? We are actually, you know, moving things. Um, and then the next part will be in spring, we're gonna go back and take those same surveys. Throughout the district to see if we do. Here this year, um, Roxboro Road Elementary will be moving forward. There are two years of. Good and we're, we're in better shape. So my hope is a strong effort by our teachers, by our administrators. Board of the Board, the superintendent.
Of course. Who presently is on those committees, the DCIP and SCEP? How were they chosen?
Well, they, we started with the SCEP was, it was faculty, Fred Roxell and some of the administrators. District committee originally was mostly district administrators, we now opened it up to other stakeholders within the building. Partially because of there was a, a very short window of time to get people together. We know to do this properly, it has to be done.
So you'll probably have representatives from each school building?
I'm hoping, yep.
All right, the other thing, um, very interesting, Phil might remember this, um, effective schools. That goes back to the nineteen, you're laughing, right? Goes back to the, you weren't, I think you were born, but it was the late nineteen eighties, Dr. Warwick was here and, um, the school district worked on all of those tenants, effective schools, because New York State schools felt that that was what a school and school districts should look like. Interesting how things, right, Paul, come around.
Absolutely.
The, I just wanna say a little bit about Roxboro, because I used to visit that when I was, um, uh, as Dan knows, when I was on the school board before and even before that. I always looked to Roxboro Elementary and I, nothing about any of the other buildings, is a really, really solid, um, building with staff. I, I would walk into all the buildings and that staff, Dan knows this because he was the principal there, was solid. They worked very, very hard and I really think harder than some other, um, schools. So it, again, um, it surprises me they're on this list. I know they'll work hard for, uh, the district and continue with the new staff that's there. One of my questions is, and I heard this, do they have the afternoon or morning program anymore at that school? For the parents? No?
Morning program was discontinued several years ago. Um, it went from morning program, cause like you said, when I was there, and it continued in the morning and then it shifted.
What's the afternoon?
To Friday afternoon program, but with a lot of the demands and things that, uh, have been asked as far as instructionally, that has been discontinued. I'm trying to think, it's probably been at least three or four years since then.
That's, that's a problem, because we always worry about instruction and in this day and age right now, we should be wor- worrying about other things. And you know that that was well attended. There was other schools that had it, did not have it, that's where you're gonna get your parents. They didn't come ten, twenty, there was fifty to sixty parents, whether you did it in the morning or in the afternoon. And again, it involved their kids. Um, that's ve- that upsets me, I heard it through the grapevine that that program's gone. I think you need to revisit that coming back, because those are things that bring parents into schools. You know, working on curriculum, it's wonderful and so forth, but you've got to have these kind of programs for parents, um, that are in need. Some of those parents are in need and, and, and Maddy Dell is a very difficult area and those kids need their parents to be there, so that's just a thing, comment.
And I wanna say too, um, that, that, I've seen the teachers at Roxell, the principals, they're working so hard. Any of this is a reflection on how. They're working really, really hard and just about, I think, lighting our. Work together to get there and I'm confident. Gonna make this work.
I do have a question, just, uh, on the district, uh, plan or goals. I know I remember a, a more or less a reoccurring theme from BPTs about common assessment work. So you talked about the importance of vertical alignment, is there any? District plan horizontal?
Well, I, I think both are important, with the PLCs, you know, we're looking at our grade level teachers meeting together. Addition to that, looking at the, the school as a K through four operation, we wanna make sure that. Level knows what each other's doing, but it's also, I mean, it's predicated on the work that happens at the grade level to make sure we're. Those are two things, um, that are. Went into detail in the, in the, uh.
Yeah, I, I have one. Um, have, in, in developing our district goals, particularly four, five and six, have we reached out to anybody, component school districts around us or within BOSI's to see what their methods are? If we could kind of model something off of that and better fit our situation?
Right, we, we have been, um, having some conversation with BOSI's. We need to look at other resources. Form what we're doing.
Yeah, well, not necessarily going out to them, but to just model some of their systems for ourselves.
That's, that's something we wanna look at, now that we have the plan in place and once we hear. What's working well for us? What do we know in other communities or districts? Very healthy thing and, and, and something that. Are going through this process and that requires. This is a healthy process to look at where we are and where we wanna. We're addressing essential elements of.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I work in a building where social emotional learning, behavioral intervention, absenteeism is very high, uh, and they do a really, really good job at combating that. So I think, you know, if we kinda look and see how others are dealing with that kind of problem, we could, we could build something very strong here based off.
And again, I, I wanna go back to at least what was said about the staff, because I think with one of the things that was looked at with chronic absenteeism, within a short period of time, we were able to bring it down almost five percentage points, just tweaking some of the processes, ensuring up some things. So there's a lot of good things that are happening and then we recognized a few things that we need to do a little bit better or just differently. And we were able to come way below the threshold of nineteen point five percent that puts you on the state list. So, um, many things that are happening and, uh, listening to people and we met with parents and we surveyed parents, uh, regarding celebrations. And when the state was there in March and I sat in, uh, on some of those and they liked the fact of having their kids recognized for things. So to your point about, uh, morning program or whatever you do, having an opportunity or something that celebrates the successes of their students and the community.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think liked it to, uh, mention that the Ms. McDonald. Mark foreign our excuse from this meeting today. Absenteeism. We'll work on that and develop a plan, thank you. Board member, Brad Truell will be chair. Right, comments from the audience, there are no names on the signup sheet for individuals wishing to. Address the boards, we'll move on to Board of Education, Board of Ed, Committee reports, Mary is not here right now, so I. Comments on that, okay, we'll go to Superintendent.
Uh, this past Monday, I had the opportunity to meet with our students that are on the Superintendent's Advisory Committee and what they did was they were reviewing the survey results from the students throughout the district. Now, last year, when they did a presentation, they looked at the results for that year and I do have to sit here and say, we have some very, very strong students in this district. Um, not only the students on the committee, but the students leading the committee and, uh, they jumped right on in and they had their data from last year and they had a plan. Said, well, let's take a look at where we were last year, what were some of the items that we presented to the board? They were doing a, a comparison, did they go up, did they stay the same? But the, probably the biggest questions were the questions that were very thoughtful around the why. They were asking those questions, well, why did this happen, what, what was going on? And then there was a lot of discussion, so you'll see a presentation by the group at the next board meeting in regard to, uh, the survey results and it'll be, uh, a lot of their work. Uh, they had some cleanup questions for myself or Lori Cook, but they worked really, really hard. The other comment I have is that, uh, Mr. Keegan and I went to a meeting recently at BOSI's and we're discussing programs that BOSI's has, have to offer and, um, my team and I are, we're just looking at all the programs at BOSI's and how we can increase the collaboration and opportunities between North Syracuse and BOSI's. So I just wanted to share that, uh, there will be more to follow with this, uh, as we move throughout the school year. And the last comment that I have is, um, that, uh, the district is currently, uh, reviewing and updating our emergency plans and in light of things that have been going on, we were already doing these things, but we will be having discussion with the buildings, um, as the school year commences, uh, regarding our emergency plans and making sure that everybody is up to date on, uh, those plans and, uh, also we're, we need to make sure that we look at our substitutes that come in as well with that, so.
Hey, thank you. Any, uh, Board of Education comments or thoughts for the good of the order? I have some.
Let me go first?
Sure.
Um, I wanna thank, uh, our Superintendent Dan Bowles and Don Keegan for attending a very important meeting last Thursday at OCM BOSI's. Being a member of the Facilities Committee, we were brought in because a purchase offer was made on, uh, our Crown Road, um, rental property, we rent, um, where all of our special, mainly all our special education children are. Many from North Syracuse are at this facility and they got, the owner got a purchase order. We had six days to match, uh, twelve point eight five, twelve million and eight hundred fifty thousand. So, um, we decided that we, um, need to purchase that property and, uh, Dan and Don came in, all the, many of the superintendents were invited to, uh, see the presentation and hear the presentation. So basically, the board had an emergency meeting that very night, Thursday night, um, and it was approved by eleven to zero to, um, go out and ask each school district and all of the, um, district voters to vote on us purchasing this land. And in the long run, as Don knows and Dan knows, um, the cost. So, um, being on the legislative committee and being the chair will be, uh, I believe have a presentation by BOSI's and I would probably ask, um, in November sometime to, um, have a presentation from BOSI's for the entire board. But we're looking to purchase that property with a vote by the taxpayers of all the districts.
Thank you, I just wanted to mention, I had, uh, Ms. Gibson put out a information to the Board of Ed about New York State School Boards. Conference that's in. Rochester. I just bring that up because we're members and it is close by this year, so it's a pretty easy one to attend if anybody. Okay, moving along, we have routine action items, I'd like to consider taking A, B. B together, if there's no objection, and I could get a motion for that, please? Motion from Bob, seconded by Terry. Any discussion on A, B or C? Question action items, um, I could, uh, have a motion to put A on the table? Not gonna group them, I wanna. Motion for A? I just wanted a comment from, uh.
This is driven by, uh, student IEP, there's an increased need based on student IEP.
Okay, just wanted some clarification on that, any questions on that? Okay, all in favor, aye. And B, a motion to put that on the table, please? George, seconded by Terry. Again, uh, we're creating positions for nurses, Jason, just a quick comment on that if you.
Yeah, um, we, we actually have, uh, more than one student coming into the building than the current nurse identified, there are some very extreme medical needs on a few students that are. Quest and feel it's best to add to our current, um, traveling part-time nurse to, to create another full-time position there to support those students.
Favor? Agreed. C, North Syracuse United Change Order, if I could get a motion. Matt, thank you. Second, please, George. Just, this is how I was trained to do this, I apologize. Got it, you're supposed to put it on, everybody's looking at me, you're supposed to put it on the table before this. I did this in another life. Just explaining. Uh, but I wanted Dan, uh, not Dan this time, Don. Dan's over here, Don to comment on the tax or she or. We talked about this in executive session.
Can you talk about the, the roof a little bit or the?
You can, you can do the roof.
Change order, so yeah, so I.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that one, that's what I meant.
No, it's okay, so, so, um, uh, as you know, we, we have a big project going on, uh, three roofs, um, Gillette, Allen Road and the junior high, and we have new tennis courts going at the junior high and we were hopeful, uh, when the voters gave our, our approval, they always authorize a certain amount of site work, uh, in connection with that and, um, we were hopeful that we'd have enough money after all the bids were done to redo that road going in the back of the junior high and if anybody's driven that road, it's, I, it's, it's kinda even hard to call it a road. Uh, it's in such bad shape and so, um, because it's the road that leads to the tennis courts, we felt that that was critically important, that not only the road get fixed, but that here we're gonna have these beautiful tennis courts, but you have to drive through a minefield to get to them. So, uh, fortunately, uh, we were able to get, um, uh, our contractor, uh, who's Nagel is gonna do the work or Nagel's the primary contractor and we, what we did was we moved the work, um, uh, from one contractor to Nagel, uh, just because, uh, Nagel has a, a relationship with, uh, uh, the state contract where their work is under state contract and so they were able to match the price that we were, the board originally awarded, provide the additional pricing for. Um, at no additional cost to the district and it kind of just makes for a, uh, uh, much, um, cleaner transaction and it also just allows us to get. Back road done, the paving, the additional parking back there, as well as the resurfacing some of the loop, uh, that was in bad shape. So I think we're, um, we're addressing some, some needs there at the junior high that, uh, that we're fortunate able, to be able to address, uh, within the budget that the voters approved.
Any other questions?
So, my concern would be the gate, because the gate is closed almost, so if this road is gonna be used for the tennis courts, when is the gate gonna be open so that you can use the road? Because you're not gonna drive, um, you don't have to drive it down to use the tennis.
The road's used by buses in the afternoon.
Yeah, it is, it is, cause I see.
So I mean, it would still need to be repaid for the buses.
Yeah, but he had mentioned the tennis courts that was gonna, that's the reason that we were, wasn't.
Yeah, and I think, I think one thing we. And I think, I think one thing we should consider doing is just revisiting when and, when we open that gate.
Yes.
And, I mean, the goal of those tennis courts really was to, to really create a community asset. I mean, obviously, our teams need them. It's been a real sore spot for our teams that they need those tennis courts fixed. But having said that, it's also a wonderful community asset. And whether the community members drive in and we'll have to figure out when we should open that gate or, or walk through the man gate that, that they can get in or, you know, walk in to use the courts from the community, we want to give them access to that. And as you know, as everybody knows, when a road gets so rutted like that, it, it's a safety issue and it really can be hazardous. And so, with the increase in flow of traffic and not only our buses, but pedestrian traffic, just not fixing that road would have been unconscionable, given the amount of work we were doing there at the junior high. You know, there's no plan for that right now. Do you want them? No, we kind of, speed bumps, you know, we're going to have to monitor those, the traffic that comes through there and see if speed and, and whatnot is a problem. Speed bumps are not popular with our snowplows. It's a little, little bit of a challenge. So, if we can avoid the speed bumps, we, we would prefer to. Good. We certainly could, we certainly could consider that if, if, if it becomes a problem, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of C? Thank you. On D, if I get a motion for D, please? George, Terry second. We already discussed this last meeting, so. Questions on that? Does this require the roll call vote, Connie? Favor? That's carried. I don't have any problem if there's no concerns grouping E, F, and G together. It's surplus of marketable, non-marketable equipment. Wooden chairs in there that are marketable, some broken wooden ones that are non-marketable.
Lot of really old technology stuff.
Notice there are some VCRs off buses and things like. We have an acknowledgement of appointment of an impartial hearing officer. Option and amendment. Mike Marizio second. Favor? We could just. A and B together if. George, A and B are instructional personnel and support staff person. Are there any comments we need?
I just want to make a, a personal comment and that deals with the sports. When George and I were on the board and no one else here was on the board, we cut one-third of our sports in 2009. Ten, remember, George, 10 years ago, these things didn't exist. It is a great pleasure that I vote tonight on this personally because we have added, I believe, almost all the football, all the soccer, all the modified sports that are going to be at Gillette and at Roxborough. It's just a really privilege tonight to vote on this. I can't say enough about Annette's speech as superintendent who worked hard over the years to bring these things back when she became superintendent. And to all of you on the board who have added these little by little. So, it's a proud moment tonight that we're adding these back in so more students can participate. It's a great thrill tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Sports. Hey, Reid, I just wanted to recognize, I noticed in, we had a retirement mentioned in one. Out was Kathleen Villanueva, librarian, 28.
No, I don't.
Okay.
She's going to Florida.
My name's been pronounced wrong my whole life, so I guess on that, but wanted to recognize that. Administrative Personnel Report, could I have a motion, please? Terry, any discussion? A, C. Favor? That's carried. Just wanted to congratulate Dave and Lindsay, our new. Was there any apprehension between the resignation time and the appointment time? There was a limbo period in there. Okay, just wondered. Okay, at this time, we have the opportunity to go into executive session. If I could get a motion. Purpose of receiving. An update on four legal matters relative to potential litigation, to receive an update on negotiations with the office personnel, maintenance and operations, and to review the employment. Schedule, no action to follow. George second. Any discussion? Favor? Pose. Carried. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Marizio, Matt? Favor? Carried. There, that's official.